The Mayor's Stateful Committee was formed to address the greatest statefalls main buildings by resident volunteers who experienced long history from Manhattan, Houston, architecture, engineering, budget and finance. There was no pre-qualification of resident volunteers other than to obtain facts and not to offer any conceited notions for active reuse or demolition. The ultimate goal of this committee is to determine the stateful main building to have any purpose or if this to be demolished with other purpose. This evening, the Stateful's Committee will make a presentation on the potential uses that may be nominated for the existing apartment building designation. Potential uses, some as a right, some accessory, some are a warrant for speed approval on those uses which are to benefit residents of the village of the young and old. The program of each subcommittee is one of the original five subcommittees charged to generate a list of potential uses to assist the Design and Engineering Subcommittee developing a program for active reuse of Stateful's main building. The program is a compilation of uses used in the specific area, compliance and security and four area requirements. All the information from the building program used in developing and designing the building. A similar process will be employed to determine the purpose of demolition of a Stateful main building at a future meeting. I would now like to introduce the Chairman of the Stateful's Committee, former Mayor Brian Denny, and former building administrator Bob Shaw. Thank you, Chairman. Our host, let me introduce Bill Garrett, the Chair of the Social Subcommittee, Frank McDonough, Chair of the Programming and Use Subcommittee, Peter Cole, Chair of Legal Subcommittee, Louis Mollis, Chair of the Architecture and Engineering Subcommittee, Ryan Mulruin, Chair of the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, and Betsy Pantheridis, Michelle Harrington of the Leadership Subcommittee. Thanks to all the Subcommittee Chairs and all community members who have volunteered your time and expertise for the best stateless Statefalls. We also want to commend you for all the service of the committee, the best issue we call required for both pieces and building program presented this evening. I will now give the presentation of Louis Mollis, Chairman of the Architecture and Engineering Subcommittee. Thank you, Louis.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. My purpose here is just to describe our Subcommittee workroom and also introduce the members.
Fire!
I'll take it last. Okay, I hope this is set. The Architect -- well, the Design and Engineering Subcommittee is responsible for picking up any of the issues that impact the building regarding architectural aspects. So, we've been asked today to do a programming stuff, very preliminary, and it's intended to sort of excite people a little bit and inspire and ask questions and objections, whatever. The other thing that's very important in our committee is that, I believe, I'll say this, I'm a very high-up politician, we're either Registered Architects, we're the student engineers, we have the landscape architecture on board, and we have facilities, project managers and teams. All these individuals are well-versed in their fields and have been able to make positive contributions to this Subcommittee. I'd love to start by introducing Joe LeBord. Joe is a structural engineer, part of our team. He has 40 years' experience and is licensed in New York State of both several of these states. Joe's specialty is forensic. He investigates buildings to see their worth and how they're structural, they're under construction. So, Joe, please.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. Just a bit of background, I'm in the village about 20 years. I really never got involved in anything when it came to village politics, frustration. I don't volunteer much. I was asked to get involved with this my first time. This is my profession, this is basically what I do for a living. I've been in the building industry for 20 years. I've taken buildings there, I've built buildings up, I evaluate buildings every day in my life. That being said, there was an inspection done back in 2019 by Fort Worth City, which I guess you guys are aware of, they evaluate the structure. At that time, they said for the most part that it was stable, there was some question loss remaining. Team went in in March, subsequent to the Mayor's team, to evaluate what we thought any issues might be with the structure, stability, how it was put together, how it would last. We went through the building, top to bottom, all four floors, we evaluated everything. What you see on these coming slides, basically, I'll give you a description of how the building is put together and what we found as we went along. As you know, the building is built basically as a U-shaped structure. The perimeter, all brick with the details that you see from the street. The inner courtyard, same structure. The interior core, if you've ever been it, I have not until that day, consists of the corridors, typical of a schoolhouse, with those yellow walls that you see, those are the corridors. Following through, the outline of the red that you see, those are the brick walls. And I say the brick walls on the inside are significant because the way this building is put together from 1879 is very substantial compared to today's age. The corridor walls are all masonry, the exterior walls are all masonry, meaning brick. The interior corridors span from one end to the other, if you follow the outline, sorry, I'm using a mouse, but if you follow the outline all the way through, the entire core of the building has a structural part of it, the entire exterior has a structural part of it, for you to understand how it's put together. When you look at the next slide, let's get to this, one more up, you get the idea of where all the classrooms are, this is a typical floor plan, it shows you where the classrooms are. The floor beams in this building basically run from brick wall to brick wall, and the whole building is laid out that way. There are some rooms that are a little bit different, but what we did find through and through, most of these brick walls are perfect. Scary, but true, they're perfect. When you look at the exterior of the building, you could walk on the outside and look hard to find a crack, you cannot. Today's modern buildings get evaluated every six, seven years, there's cracks that you find all the time. This building really does not have any cracks that are significant in any nature. The thickness of the walls range between two to three feet, pretty significant, and that's the reason why it's standing the way it is, and that's the reason why it's going to outlast all of us. There may be failures inside in certain areas, but it's really very nominal compared to what you're looking at as far as the structure is concerned. And I've been in enough of them like this to know. So, the basic outline of the building is set up with these corridor walls that go from the basement all the way up. All the classrooms are divided with these intermediate walls, but there's wood beams that span from, I'll go back to this wall, the wood beams span from these interior walls to the exterior walls. There are some test probes that were done where we could evaluate the wood beams, they're very significant, the beams, they're just old, old, petrified wood that's so hard you probably couldn't cut it with a saw. And that's typically what happens with wood as it ages. It's very strong and it lasts. There are several areas we came across, and the one that everyone talks about is one particular area, you'll see photos of that, where the floor collapsed from one section to the other. It was within two rooms, maybe it's about 1,500 square feet, out of the 100,000 square feet, that's the extent of the severe damage. There's several rooms that have some other damaged plaster, some beams, some wood buckling, which is pretty typical when you have water infiltration that's occurred over so many years, and that's really where the failure has been, just the water infiltration. As far as the primary structure elements are concerned, the fact that it was built the way it was built, between the interior core and the exterior core and the wood beams, makes it kind of hard to beat, from a structural standpoint. I'm not being an advocate, and I'm not being a dissension person, I'm just saying that the way the structure stands and the way it's built, it reminds you of these old buildings you would see in old movies, and the kind of building that in World War II would get hit with shells over and over and over and wouldn't fall down, that's the kind of building that this is. It's just built that way, because they didn't know any better back in 1879, they overbuilt. Modern structures don't last as long. The main entrance, when you look at it, you get an idea of the detail and the masonry facade. You look at that and you see the detail involved, and it's just quite significant. This same detail is obviously around the entire building, and when you do walk around the building and look at how it's all put together, yes, you do see some cracks in the brick, but for the most part, it's weathered incredibly because of the way it was put together. This photograph on the right, that is the one particular room where the collapse was. That's between the first and second floor, on the forward Stewart Avenue side. That's it. That's from water getting in from the roof over a prolonged period of time. Really, when we go to do inspections like this in the field, it's simply neglect, there's a lot of landlords that don't take care of their buildings, and this is what you end up with if you don't pay attention. Not unusual. Typical corridor. Most of the building looks like this. Weathered, but from a structural standpoint, it's intact. Another view. I think the, this is in the cafeteria room? Maybe? Yeah, cafeteria room. This picture right over here is one of the corridors, which is really very typical. These are the first floor rooms, which are very grand and basically just showing the wear of weather, again. But, mind you, we walked through this entire building. Maybe there was three or four soft spots that we couldn't go near, but we walked through the entire building, in and out of classrooms over and over and over. It's a view of the chapel. I never saw this before, it was pretty remarkable when I did. An overhead view. Peeling paint, probably the biggest issue in there. Couple of notes on demolition, only because it's being tasked also by our committee. I've taken buildings down before. A building such as this, as the Mayor had mentioned earlier, there is such a thing as a controlled demolition, basically, or what's the word that you use?
Historic demolition.
Historic demolition, where they would extract the elements in the building that are significant, preserve them, document them, put them in a museum someplace, and the other method is basically just go in and take it down. Even just to take this building down the way it stands without preserving anything would be a significant task because of the way it's built. It would have to be done basically kind of like a surgery, top-down, section by section. It just wouldn't come down with a wrecking ball, not that simple, not that cheap, especially in this day and age. Food for thought as far as that's concerned. We're good?
Yep.
Thank you.
I'd just like to go over the photographs very quickly. As Joe mentioned, the exterior is in very good shape, and there are these isolated pockets of space which would not amount to more than 1% to 10% of the entire building. When you come into the entrance, you have this grand staircase with iron grill work and above it a very impressive skylight. It would be nice if that area was opened, like an atrium, a full atrium, to celebrate that architecture. The tile work is exquisite, and it has to be mentioned, it's terracotta on the walls, and I believe it's English tiles on the flooring. Minten tiles, very rare, and again, if there was going to be historic demolition, all these elements would have to be removed and exhibited. Again, the corridors are in very good condition, they're probably the best element in the building. Again, they're masonry walls, you see stucco and wood paneling on either side, trimmed openings that give way to each room. The dining hall itself is graced with Corinthian columns, which aren't pictured here, but you have this mural that's still preserved. And then the dining, sorry, the reception rooms, as has been stated, may be converted to multipurpose use in the future, we'll see, but they've got great possibilities. The chapel is the glory of the space, and the windows are apparently by Tiffany. The woodwork is very carefully and beautifully carved, and the reason I showed this image, it shows the vaulted ceiling detailing above, which is most impressive. This is taken from a balcony overlooking the chapel. So, you could house theatrical events there, or other, even religious events can be housed there.
Now, I'd like to introduce Frank McDonough, Chair of the Programming and Use Subcommittee, and Peter Cole, Chair of the Legal Subcommittee.
Good evening. My name is Frank McDonough. I was asked by the Mayor in January to chair the Programmatic Use and Analytics Committee. My family came out to Garden City right after World War II, and all my family was basically born here. My brothers and sisters all went to the high school, my two children went through the high school, and I have grandchildren getting ready for the high school. So, over those several decades, we've learned a lot about Garden City. About 30 years ago, I had moved out of town for employment reasons, moved back from the city, and a very close friend said, "Frank, we gotta go down to Town Hall." And I said, "Okay, Charlie, where are we going?" He said, "We just have a little thing to say about something called St. Paul's that they're about to buy." And I said, "Okay." And he dropped me off, brought me up to the upstairs where the Village Board of Trustees were meeting and accepting comments, much like we will do tonight, and he said, "Frank, I'll be right back, I'm gonna park the car." I said, "Okay, Charles." And 30 years later, I'm still waiting for him. But that kind of resilience is what it requires to do these kind of projects. And in essence, the Mayor's Committee, which I chaired back in the mid-'90s, began looking at uses in St. Paul's. So, I was delighted when Mayor Cosmo asked me to come in January to help look at the historic demand by residents for uses of this building. We were not prejudging how we would use it, because there are really three ways that you can use the building. The last 30 years, it's been a monument, it's had no real use. That's one potential. Another is to demolish it, certainly a strong feeling for that among this group. And then the other is to find out what uses there could be, adaptive reuses, and what have we learned over those 30 years? Well, what we've learned is considerable, so the process that began in January was for us to do deep research. So, the Committee of Eight began to look at all of the requests since 1992 to date as to what residents of this village had requested, what did they want to use St. Paul's for, whether or not we agreed, disagreed, this was just a historical compilation and categorization of what those uses were. That was number one. Then, number two, we looked at what the adjoining communities had done, then we looked nationally to see what was done. So, we have a pretty good view of what the potential uses for a structure like this could be. Most of those are identified in the handout, which I hope you've taken a look at, and those groups are going to go through another process, and what is that process? That process is a vetting with the residents, with you. What are your thoughts, what are the contemporary views of the village? Because clearly, the village has changed over 30 years. I haven't, but the village has. And so, the concept is, what is it that we need or don't need to go ahead with that? So, when you look at the uses, and we'll talk about them in a moment, our process is, this is our best guess as to what people have asked for historically. Doesn't mean that's not what they're asking for now, but just to show what people's opinions have been. Next step is to get some of your views tonight, and then two more town meetings, and then a survey will be taken by our committee to see what the village demands are, and if they are compatible with the uses, compatible with the legal structure, and compatible with the building. That's the process that'll happen over the summer and into the first months of the fall. Now, let me ask you something. When you look at all of these uses on the historical request, you'll see there's one area that is precluded, and that's called unacceptable use, and that's a result of a judicial decision. Many of you know the Kenny lawsuit that said private use is not acceptable on this property because it has been declared parkland, and so, private use is something our committee did not look at. We will be looking at over the summer demolition, and we welcome those who have thoughts on that to present to us at their convenience. But all of these uses have been part of the historic record that we think is very important for you. Now, just a quick question, how many of you in here own homes in the village? Okay. Now, how many of you have gone out and renovated those homes, whether a new kitchen or extended bath, or done something that has done that, right? And so, we do that because we think we have a need, and second, we do that because we think it will improve the value of our homes, right? So, we get that done, we bring in an architect to a friend, and they tell us, this is what it will look like. That's a process we're going to begin, again, this summer, once we get your views. But that's only half of the problem. We all have desires, we all have wants, but then it comes down to that one question, what can you afford? I could show you the plan that my wife and I did in 1992. 30 years later, we're still inching along in that process to getting that plan implemented. That's what will happen if we decide to go that way in St. Paul's. This is not an all-or-none proposition, it will be a phased development of St. Paul's. Now, how many of you the community park down on the south end of the village, right? The pool. Most of us have. Unfortunately, I remember when that pool was a dump. Literally, the Village of Garden City, dump. But the community at that time said, "We see something different. We can take that had been a landfill and convert it into something valuable." And over time, we added a pool, tennis courts, platform, indoor, all kinds of manner of services that add to the value of your homes. So, two, on the uses side of St. Paul, we would look to make sure these are incremental to home value. Or, if demo is the best way to proceed, that is incremental to home value. But the issue is, this is not a one-bite opportunity, this is a phased opportunity over time. One of the things that we thought was very interesting is, how is it to work, and it must be an affordable phased process? I tell my family this all the time, there are a lot of things I would like, but to be candid, it took 15 years before we introduced air conditioning in my home. It took all that time, it took us three years before we finished the kitchen. These are things that are natural and normal. We are all taxpayers in this village, and we work to do things that are both what we want and what we can afford at the time we look to do that. That'll be the part of the process that will rule the Programmatic and Use Committee. One of the different points of view that I think we also share is that there are lots of things that drive us. When we're towards retirement, we have less needs, when we have more concern on cost. When we are new to the village, we also have a concern on cost, but we also need services, particularly for our youth. How many of us have to go to a different village for both SAT prep or other type of programs that we would like to have in town? That's part of the process that you'll see in here. So, when you look at these village requests, the historic village, we'd like to have your view as to whether or not these are still areas of concern, areas that can help your home value, areas that can help your overall life, and particularly as our citizens get seniors. Because whatever we do, we want to keep this community intact. The Village of Garden City is a very unique community, and part of that process is just what you see here tonight, right? Concerned citizens looking to do something for each other. And that's what we did with the pool, and that's what we may do with St. Paul's, whether it's monument, demolition, or adaptive reuse. So, I want you to take a look at those uses and let us know what is your area of interest and where you think it can be helpful. And I guess as a final thought, if you go out tonight and you take that handout you have, one of the most interesting articles that I think that certainly has been driving the Programmatic Use Committee is, what is the most important determinative of your children's success and their life? What's the one thing that you can do as a parent? Do you wrap the baby up? Do you listen to Mozart? Do you have different play games? Do you teach them a language early? No. What the Atlantic article says, and it's right out there, so make sure you got a copy of it, is that the single, single most important thing you can do as a parent is choose the place you raise your child. Choose the place you raise your child. You've chosen Garden City. And I think as you walk out tonight, and we hope to hear from you on the Programmatic Use Committee, there's one thing that we would like to know. Why did you move here? Why did you come to Garden City? Why did your children return to Garden City? Why did you want them to come back to Garden City? That's what distinguishes us from the rest of Long Island. We want to continue that as a community, as a group, whether it's monument, demolition, or adaptive reuse. We work on this as a community, and that begins tonight. That begins with your comments tonight, and we, as a Committee on Programmatic Use, will be available to you, to hear your points of view, to clarify what can and cannot be used, that's why I stand next to Peter as close as I can, right? And we will be happy to have your thoughts throughout tonight and over the summer, and in the next two public comment sessions, as well as for the survey that we have. Peter?
Evening. I don't have quite the family investment in Garden City as Frank described, but I've lived here 50 years. I've been a lawyer in the city of New York in an international law firm for 50-plus years, I did move from the city to here. What our role is, Subcommittee is, we have, as I count them, about four dozen potential uses that Frank's Committee is investigating, considering. We want to make certain that those uses don't get, create complications because of legal impediments. Just to give a little background, as you know, there was a lawsuit in the 1990s when there was a plan to lease or sell the land to a private developer of a retirement-type community or assisted-care community. That decision said that you could not do that, Garden City could not do that, without getting authorization, legislation from Albany. But the court sided at that time, that that was based on what it then viewed as the circumstance of this land, which was devoted to public or municipal use, not to parkland use. In 2005, the trustees declared this piece of property, this parcel, to be parkland. Parkland narrows the scope of what you can do without having to go to Albany to get approval. And many of these proposals or projects that are going to be under consideration, depending on how they're designed, depending on how they're implemented, and depending on who runs them or conducts them, will raise issues as to whether or not the project's approval needs to get home-rule legislation. We don't know that right now, because we, as I say, we have 48 here. I suspect that we aren't going to have 48 at the end, and I suspect that the 48, whatever we remain of the 48, will be more specifically described relative to how they'll be designed, implemented, and conducted. And so, until that time, we can't come out with definitive opinions as to, is this good? Can we do it without going to Albany? Or does it raise a question as to Albany? But that's, that's an issue that we can't address until you folks give Frank's Subcommittee a better understanding of what you would like to see done and how that might be doable.
I'd like to introduce Paul Capice. He, like me, is a member of the Architectural Design Review Board of Garden City. We volunteer our time on a monthly basis to assess new construction in the village. At the same time, Paul is a Registered Architect like I am here in New York. He has his own firm in Manhattan, I'm now retired, but we have a lot in common, actually. And we worked on this presentation together. The way it's broken out, there is going to be a section on village zoning use, and that will be defining what the zoning ordinances seem to allow us to do and what is questionable. We'll go through a programming and blocking area where we'll take the building and break it into components and see what could possibly fit inside, and then we'll go to the site plan so we can assess the parking and the play area.
But that's, that's an issue that we can't address until you folks give Frank's subcommittee a better understanding of what you would like to see done and how that might be doable.
I'd like to introduce Paul Capice. He, like me, is a member of the Architectural Design Review Board of Garden City. We volunteer our time on a monthly basis to assess new construction in the village. At the same time, Paul is a registered architect like I am here in New York. He has his own firm in Manhattan. I'm now retired, but we have a lot in common, actually. And we worked on this presentation together. The way it's broken out, there is going to be a section on village zoning use, and that will be defining what the zoning ordinances seem to allow us to do and what is questionable. We'll go through a programming and blocking area where we'll take the building and break it into components and see what could possibly fit inside. And then we'll go to the site plan so we can assess the parking and the play areas surrounding the building. I'd just like to say, when we started this exercise, we basically looked at three elements. One, the structural stability of the building. Two, the demographic breakdown of the village, what we need to respond to in terms of all the different age groups here in the village. And in doing so, I think we've come up with something that is pretty reasonable and very responsive to those needs. We don't want this to be taken as this is a fait accompli. It's not. It's basically a proposal for you to assess, review, and give us your feedback on. The word preliminary is very critical here, so I want to emphasize that. I'll pass it over to Paul now.
Thank you, Will. Like Will said, my name's Paul Capice. I'm an architect. I'm also a 13-year resident of the Village of Garden City. What I'm presenting right now is essentially a follow-up to what Peter had just outlined regarding parkland status and what Frank was speaking about when it comes to the uses. You know, we looked into certain uses that we believe the village residents are interested in, and what I did is I put together a village zoning analysis and parking, use analysis and parking analysis. The thing to keep in mind about this is it's, we're talking about village zoning. If anything we're doing here does not comply with village zoning, there are, there's always the option for variances. But much of what we're looking into is as of right in our zoning district, and you'll, in the zoning district, you'll see that as I go through this. This is the zoning analysis breakdown, but I simplified it into some simple bullet points, which will kind of make this easier. So, based on a preliminary review of the village zoning, on the left are things that we pretty clearly understand. The village zoning allows for public schools on the property, actually, items one, two, and three. Public schools, nurseries, and greenhouses, as long as they're non-commercial. With nurseries and greenhouses, there are certain restrictions due to the size of the site. I don't see any of those restrictions causing a limitation or a real problem on our property. Three, public park, playground, parking field, all as of right, as long as it's used for village or county purposes, which is the idea, and you'll see that when Will presents his portion. The next couple of items, four and five, these are uses that are permitted with certain requirements. So recreation buildings customarily incidental to school or college use. They're permitted with approval of the Board of Trustees after a public hearing, public notice. If this was the decision and this is the direction we thought the village wanted to go in, there's no reason to believe that we couldn't get this approved. I can't say that, I'm not on the Board of Trustees, but if that's what the village wanted. Church, I mentioned church because, as Joe showed slides of earlier, there is a chapel in this space right now, and the idea is that the chapel may be used for events in the future, maybe as part of ceremonies, whatever. So that's a use that could be permitted, subject to approval by the Board of Appeals. One thing to keep in mind about the zoning is no structure in this zoning district should be used or occupied by more than one principal use. So, given the size and, you know, the scale of this project, and the fact that we're trying to serve many constituents in the village, the idea is there will probably be many different, or several different uses in the building. So this will be a mixed-use building, which likely will require variance for that. The underlying zoning is an R20 zoning, that's the district. So it's a residential zoning that allows these things, but again, mixed use would typically not be allowed. Further investigation has to be conducted to, to really figure out how the parkland designation interacts with all of this. Again, we will dig down on that, and Peter will really be digging down on that and his group as we kind of flush out the program. Food services, right now there is food services in the building. It's incidental or accessory to the school use right now. If that were to be turned into a restaurant, more of a commercial restaurant or a catering hall, that would require variance. That's my understanding, so we need to look into that more. And while many of these community uses that we're going to be presenting and that Will's going to be walking you through are permitted as of right, a community facility or a community center is not actually a permitted use or a stated permitted use in the district. So, I'm just pointing to that. Again, many people here, I'm sure, have been through the variance process in their own house. This is the same sort of variance we'd be talking about, a village-level variance, not going up to state level or anything like that.
Okay, here's an image of St. Paul's. It's what we call an isometric. It basically has about 105,000 usable square feet. And it's, it's a huge building, as you all know. Joe referred to it as U-shaped. I refer to it as an E-shaped, because it has these three extensions. The thing, again, I want to emphasize are those three elements when we started this exercise. One, the structural stability of the building. Two, the zoning ordinances, what would be permitted. And three, the demographics of the village, the needs of the village. One thing I'd like to state right off the bat with regards to the uses, because of the structural setup in the building right now, it gives an availability of spaces on either side of the corridor that are, on average, about 20 feet deep. And that does not facilitate any sort of athletic programs. So when you think of how we're responding to this building, you may say, you know, there's no basketball courts, there's no this, that, you know? We didn't think it was easily facilitated in this building. So I'd like to state that right off the bat. What is facilitated is basically this. We break down the building into three components, the east and the west wing and the center zone, and they're all approximately 35,000 square feet. The west wing, in its entirety, we are going to recommend, in this exercise, that we dedicate it to the Department of Recreation. The Department of Recreation, right now, is struggling in, I'd say, facilities that shouldn't have been there in the first place, in the cottages that wasn't built for that purpose. The senior centers in the cottages, as well as the other one, are really limited in what they can do, and it's time to give them the flexibility and the space that the village demands on a daily basis. Clued Hall, that we're using today as a town hall space, is used for so many different functions that they're employing their staff to take down and put together different scenarios, constantly, constantly. And it's quite a strain on the facilities, and this would serve to alleviate that. The center zone, we're dedicating, more or less as a community center, for lack of another word. It basically will be accommodating multipurpose rooms that can house everything from exhibit halls to meeting rooms, reception areas, classrooms, if they want to have cooking classes or after, you know, after-school activity kind of functions, all can be accommodated there, as well as leisure space. And finally, the east wing. The east wing, where it's, we're suggesting in this exercise that it be dedicated to mixed uses. This one kind of goes to all the different age groups, from pre-K all the way to senior centers. And I think it, it also responds very favorably to the needs of the village. In breaking this down, again, we'll go with the, we color-coded this a little bit, starting with the west wing, it's shown in orange. This is where we have the reception area for the, and the administration area as well, I'm sorry, for the recreation department. We also have a large space, let's see if I can get over here. It's the only space in the building where the interior corridors are nonexistent. So this is one broader space. And in that broad space, which is close to, I'm going to estimate about 50 linear feet in width, I think there's a possibility to accommodate a small auditorium. We can tier down to the floor below, so the seating can be tiered, and that would be a very exciting space for the recreation center. We're calling that the indoor theater. This area here is actually outside. It's between the west wing and the center core of the building, and we're suggesting a benchell-type exterior theatrical performing arts area. And that's all done on the exterior, you know, in good weather, it could really serve well. If we go to the east, oh, sorry about that. If we go to the center core, first floor again, we have the entrance atrium that I'm proposing an atrium to open up that grand staircase when you come in, and exhibit-type spaces on either side. So if we have any sort of permanent or temporary collections, we want to show art programs from the schools, et cetera, they can all be housed there. The lower side here is currently the dining hall, that's the one with the Corinthian columns I described earlier, and to what degree that could be for food services should be investigated. Outside, on the other side of the E, is the possibility of creating an event garden, and that could work hand and glove with this community center. That's why we colored it in blue. The rest of this floor here is where we're terming an early learning center, and this is to accommodate the needs of the village with regards to very young kids. There'll be classrooms, administrative offices, an outdoor play garden outside, there'll be a drop-off, but here, we're anticipating we could put a big playground for the kids. If you go to the basement, we'll start with the west wing again. Here we have support facilities for that auditorium. There'll be changing rooms and locker rooms. There'll be a floating office there for admin, and storage facilities accordingly. This slightly darker orange area is the tiered auditorium. So that's a two-story auditorium. The community center below is composed of an existing kitchen that used to feed the school. They, they would feed from here upstairs to the dining hall. And a possibility of restoring that to some degree, so it could service the building needs. It could also perhaps service, you know, cooking classes for adults later. The gray is storage, mechanical, electrical, information technology. These are the core engineering rooms of the building. If we go over to the east side of the building, we have more classrooms, et cetera, for the kids. Going to the second floor, again, starting with the west wing, which in this instance, we've dedicated to the Department of Recreation. Their dance and aerobics rooms are located in this area. Their music rooms are located here. These facilities can be expanded. And what's important here is, if you think about it, all the performing arts are taking place in these rooms. In the center core of the building, we have the chapel, we have access to that beautiful chapel. There's a series of large, grand reception rooms there that could all be accommodating events, or I propose we call them multipurpose right now and see what needs evolve over Going to the east wing, this is where we create a senior center. Again, the east wing is mixed use. We started with an early learning center on this floor. Now it's dedicated to the senior community here at Garden City, whether they have simply meeting rooms, game rooms, leisure rooms, possibility of physical therapy room, all this can be accommodated there. On the third floor, going back to the west wing, again, we had, on the second floor, we had performing arts. We could have the fine arts program on this floor, and that'll be arts and crafts rooms. They'll also have the creation of a sculpture room, which there's a great demand for. And we have a fantastic science program that can be cultivated further by building a facility here for that purpose. If we go to the center core of the building, you have that chapel balcony, but again, there's a huge reception space there, and again, multipurpose spaces. So depending on what kind of use for the community we want, maybe we dedicate it for game rooms or whatever. That is all up for grabs as to what we want to do with that space. If we go to the east wing once again, we now did, below, we did the early learning center, then we did the senior center. Now we start attacking our teenagers, and we're proposing a STEM center, similar to what they have in Chaminade. This could have several labs dedicated to physics, chemistry, biology, natural sciences. The STEM lab itself will also have a science olympiad zone. Robotics has become very, very important. I don't know if you know, but two Garden City students have become robotics champions, for lack of another word, and this is a growing field here in Garden City. So we have the possibility of accommodating that need here. There's also a need for a break space. These are teenagers, you know, they work, but then they break, and we have that here. Finally, the fourth floor. The fourth floor is a little bit peculiar. It's not a continuous floor. It breaks into separate areas. And while the building has three individual main entry points, one for the east, one for the west, and the center, these areas are only accessible from each wing of this building. So the west floor, we got a request, again, Department of Recreation for a computer arcade kind of space for the kids. That's a growing demand, and I think we can accommodate them very well here. This portion here is storage. If we go to the center core of the building, this is, again, dedicated to teenagers, and we're suggesting a teen lounge of some sort, keep them off the street a little bit, maybe. They'll have ping pong, billiards, whatever. But it's a room for the teenagers to hang. There's also building security. We have to think in these terms, and I think putting it near the teen lounge probably makes a lot of sense. I have a teenage son. Finally, the STEM center below, the top floor, being high up, we're suggesting maybe they put some skylights in there, and it becomes an indoor garden. We're allowed to do planting, indoor planting here, as long as it's non-commercial, and this could be a very interesting part of the STEM center. These gray areas are other pavilions in the building. One is a clock tower, which I'd like to see restored, and additional storage spaces. So I hope you found this compelling, and if you don't like it, that's fine. We need that input. If you do like it, we need your applause. We need, we need your input, as simple as that, so. I'm going to hand it back to Paul, he's going to talk about proposed parking and site planning for the site.
Thank you, Will. All right. So for this portion, we... So for this portion, we have the site plan. Everyone probably recognized this is the site of St. Paul's. We have the park, the ball fields, lacrosse and soccer to the left with baseball, the existing parking lot that runs along this area here, and then St. Paul's itself right here with Cluit Hall, where we are, and the fieldhouse behind it. I do want to just briefly thank Bill Kuhl for helping us. You'll notice, and he helped us with some inspiration for a landscape plan, a little landscape design for the playground facility, the, both the formal garden and the theater garden, I'll call it, as well as parking, a parking garden behind the building itself. So when it comes to the parking, one of the things we were tasked with doing was taking the use breakdown and the use, the using study that Will has just presented, and trying to figure out whether, what a reasonable parking, number of parking spaces would be, what the parking requirement is, what's the load. So what I did is I took those spaces, those square footages, I was very conservative, conservative meaning I would always round up. But the zoning tells us how many occupants there are per square footage of space, and the zoning also tells us how many parking spaces we need per occupant for different uses. So I went through all the uses, all of the spaces, and came up with a total parking requirement for this building of 650 parking spaces. That's a lot of spaces. But keep in mind, that assumes that the building is being simultaneously used by all of these uses at the same time, which will never be the case. That is not how this, that's not how we're envisioning this building right now. In terms of the existing parking spaces, we currently have 240-something, I can't read that, but 240-something parking spaces right now. And, oh. Better. Well, there it is, 240 parking spaces. Those parking spaces, just so you could see, are basically along this access road back here, the main parking area by the existing playground, and towards the front of the building where most people have probably parked today. The idea is to take down the cottages that are behind the building right now that are not in very good shape. So a lot of that program will move its way into St. Paul's. And between where the cottages are and this look, and St. Paul's itself, is where we could build this more kind of manicured parking area that would be kind of tree-lined a little bit nicer. And this would be the daily parking for St. Paul's use. And then back behind that would be kind of a denser parking field. And that's where we would really, you know, try and tightly and efficiently fit as many cars as we can. The total count when we're done, we end up with 417 new parking spaces, which yields 657 parking spaces. So it hits our parking number, gives us a lot more parking spaces than we have right now. Again, this is preliminary. Again, you know, an important thing is that we would have to, as we develop the program, as we develop what this building's going to be, would be important to study the occupancy phasing, when we think different uses would be at maximum capacity, and how this would all be used. But it looks like, at first blush, we could accommodate the parking we would need with surface parking, which is really the most inexpensive way to handle this, without giving up any ball fields or giving up anything of real value. So I think that's important.
Thank you, Paul. Next, Bill Gary?
The next schedule for us this evening is to take your, some of your questions from the floor, correct? I think we allocated up until 9:30, if you care, to come up and, is it a microphone? Identify yourself and tell us what's on your mind. And then we'll, you know, when you're done with your comments or offerings, we'll be happy to sum up and send you home. So.
Good evening, all. Thank you for the presentation. My questions don't directly address what has been presented. I am part of a group called FDEM, FDEM for demolition. But we're in the process of learning, just like everyone else here. So I have some questions. Most likely, the mayor is going to want to address them. A while ago, I had the privilege of being part of a committee in the western section that did a lot of study on St. Paul's. So some of my questions are informed by that experience in which I was a co-member with our now mayor. I'm sorry, unfortunately, there's short notice for this in terms of the other members of the group, so we could have said more if we had a little more time. Hopefully, the next meeting, there'll be a little more notice. That being said, I have a couple of questions. One is the definition that we're using for the word demolition. It seems as if the referendum is going to be two choices, and all, the whole building or demolish. So I take it that the idea or concept of a partial demolition, which was discussed, Mr. Mayor, at a meeting that we had quite a while ago. So if that's not part of what you're going to be doing, my question is, maybe my group is going to consider what that means and if we should address it ourselves. So that's my first part of my question, if you, if you can please respond.
Steve, if I understand your question correctly, you're talking about the types of demolition that would be reviewed or analyzed, or?
Okay. Let me, let me make it a little more clear. We went to a presentation, which I remember, you may remember, a while back when we were in the western section group, okay? A former trustee threw out the idea of preserving a portion of the building and demolishing a portion.
Right.
Is that something that your committee is open to considering, not considering? Just so.
We're open, right now, we're open to all kinds of solutions to the problem, right? We're not just focused on adaptive reuse. We're also going to be looking at types of demolition, as was discussed before. How do you take down a building of this size, of this, you know, strength, the way you've described how strong this building is, and the history of this building, right? There's a real polemic here that has to be addressed, Steve, and that is, what do the residents want? Do they want to tear down this building and essentially remove the fabric of our community, right? This building was built for A.T. Stewart. So there are a lot of things we would have to discuss. Demolition can come in different forms, right? There's also a concept, I don't know if people understand this, is the concept of facadeism. If you look it up, is not really a solution to a problem. It really is a solution where you keep a portion of the facade and you build a newer structure behind that facade, right? That's another concept. So there are multiple concepts that we would have to investigate, to see what is the most appropriate for the village.
Okay. Because I'm thinking in terms of, I think the suggestion from the former board member was to knock out the west wing. It would afford for more parking, they'd be, and less costly in terms of a build. So that's just.
There are several different options that we would have to investigate.
Okay. The other question I have, which is part of the same thing, is would, if you're doing demolition, are you going to adhere to what was discussed about 10 years ago in terms of the five-step process, where demolition would ultimately result in a green space?
Like I said, everything's on the table. I'm not, I'm not concluding anything.
What I'm getting at, it's not going to be rubble. If it's demolished, it's not going to be rubble.
Well, no, you have to have, as I said in my opening comments, you have to have a purpose, right? The purpose has to be determined once you demolish, right? If you demolish the building, what's going to be left? A hole in the ground, or a new site, or a park, or a new structure? I have no idea.
Well, I'll be happy to email you a little more specifically, but I'm referring to is what I thought was a protocol that the village had about 10 years ago, which says that at the end of the demolition, it's going to be, it's going to be landscaped and it's going to be green space. Now what happens after that is another story.
Steve, I can't go back 10 years. I was not a member of the board in 10 years. I was not involved in St. Paul's 10 years ago. This is a new day, right? This is a new day. We're starting fresh. We have members of the, of the committee that are focused on trying to figure out what the solution is for the village. That's why we're having this meeting today, and I'm very happy to see everybody's here tonight. I'm really happy about this.
Okay. I just don't want to see the demolition option saying it's going to be, it's going to be a bunch of rubble.
No. Well, Steve, like I said, you know, we're not taking anything off the table at this point. Demolition could be type A, type B, type C. There's different types of demolition. And we're going to investigate all of them.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Alicia Meehan. I'm a parent, and I've lived in Garden City for a few years. It's so exciting to hear all of this. I have a couple of questions. I'm hoping, I'm just going to ask them all, and I'm hoping you can address them. I'm a Girl Scout leader of two troops here. We have an awesome, vibrant community of young people who want to volunteer and learn how to serve others. But community space is really a problem. One of my Girl Scout troops is all children of working parents. We meet on Sundays, and there is almost no community space available to us. So I share that with you all. Also, I find that more parents of young children in the community have two working parents, as opposed to maybe 10, or 15, or 20 years ago, when there might have been a stay-at-home parent. So there really is a need on the weekends to have a space where groups can meet, but also, a lot of times during the week, kids can't necessarily get shuffled back and forth to activities. So having a space where the community can meet on weekends would be great. I heard you mention both pre-K or that kind of a program, but also that it was acceptable as a public school space. So I wanted to find out if the committee had spoken to the Garden City Public Schools about having a free pre-K program? Because I imagine that would be another great incentive to make Garden City a stronger community. New York City has an amazing free pre-K program, and many districts on Long Island do, but we don't, which is actually a drawback. And I just wanted to hear about if there was a collaboration with the public schools, or if you were talking about a private option. I also would love to hear more about walking paths and spaces. Our sideways, sidewalks in Garden City are actually not great. And the idea that we have this massive property is something exciting to explore as a walker and runner. You also mentioned parking. I have to say, I'm concerned over 650 spots, when I've been back and forth three times to St. Paul's today, and often I can't find parking when the building is closed. I can't imagine what it's going to be like when the building is open. And last, you have really swayed me tonight, from being pro-demolition to pro-more community space. But I'd love to hear pricing and long-term plans. We use the pool all the time. The pool is a great reason why Garden City stood out and was worth the price tag when we were considering other communities. I have a feeling this could be the same way, but I know a lot of people here are concerned about pricing, too. So pre-K, Girl Scouts, walking paths, and pricing. Thank you.
Thank you for all your questions.
I don't know which ones we start with. You can start with one, and I'll start with the other.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I love you. Listen, this is exactly the kind of conversation we encourage, and you're welcome to any of our programmatic meetings. Let me just say that we agree with that. Having said that, this is preliminary. We're trying to find out what is the new need in the village. We recognize that two-income family is a real issue. Part of our issue is also to see if we could have emergency daycare, child support. How many of us have been in a situation where someone can't show up, and now you're really in a jam? We'd like to address that if we can. Look, we also have to be very sensitive to pricing and our seniors, right? So we're working on a program for that as well, that I think will be very successful. A walking path, easy to do. But remember what we said. Why are we all here? Why did you move to Garden City? Because it's a community. And this will be, potentially, a monument to that, a new park if demolition prefers, or a place where we can be a magnet for all of the things that you're talking about. You are welcome to our committee at any time, and to go through this in detail. And we will work on a financial plan that is, as I said, phased and affordable for both the seniors and the newest residents coming into town. There are a number of aspects to that. We are sensitive to that. This is the first step. Thank you for identifying the critical issues.
So a quick response on the school question. Without divulging confidentiality's, which we cannot, and without dealing with the potential legal question of permitted uses, we've had three conversations with the superintendent of schools, who provided us with a lot, a lot of needs and things she'd love to see. You know, when you give a superintendent of schools a blank check, they, they can ask for a lot. But enthusiasm for the potential, I'll just say that. And that channel of communication is wide open.
I also want to comment on the, on the question regarding pricing. We can't develop a cost for the project until we come up with a design or some idea of what the building is going to be developed to. So we have to understand that. We have to take several more steps to get to the point to understand what the budget would be. So I just say, stay tuned and follow up on the meetings, and we're going to get to that point very, very carefully. There'll be a very, very precise meeting on the budget that we were going to entertain for this building, at War for Demolition. Please come up.
Hi, I'm George Kane. A little too loud, I guess. Frank, I heard you say monument, use, or demolition. Okay, that's, that's three choices. Am I, am I missing something? I mean, I had heard all, no, you didn't say that?
No, I just looked at him.
There's two choices, right? That's all there's going to be, is two choices. Is that right?
The choices would be to develop the building as an adaptive reuse and potential demolition.
Okay. End of story, right?
That's my understanding.
All right, okay. You're the boss, I don't know.
Well, that's what we're going to.
What we said was, for 30 years, it has been a monument. For 30 years, it has been a monument.
Okay, but it's not, there is not an intention to preserve this building as a monument. I hope, right?
I think I made it clear. Thank you. Anyone else? Please come on up.
Hi, Judy Courtney. Excuse me, Judy Courtney. I had a couple of structural questions and then a use question. On the structural question, when, gosh, when I looked at the proposals, does that imply that those cement walls, I don't know who I'm asking this of, those cement walls will be removed?
No.
So all the use is going to fit into the existing footprint? So, which is classrooms, right? Especially on the first floor, it's mostly classrooms? So it's a very.
St. Paul's was designed as 500 classrooms.
Right. Okay, so it's, it's a, it's a, it's a limited design, at least on the first floor, right, in terms of layout?
On the first floor, we have large rooms on the first floor, the parlor rooms. On the other floors, walls could be taken out between classrooms to create larger spaces.
Right, because they're not the stone walls, right?
Right. The bearing walls are the perimeter walls.
Right.
And the interior corridor walls.
Okay, so, and they'll.
Those are bearing walls.
So they'd remain, in, in this proposal, they would remain?
So far, we're keeping all those walls.
Got it.
As far as I know.
Okay. And then, the way I saw the different floors, the implication is that the fourth floor is in just as good a shape as the first floor. Is that correct?
Well, there's some water damage on the fourth floor because of the open roof areas.
Right. Right, so there's more.
But some of that water infiltrated to the floors below.
Understood.
And in one particular photograph, it showed that, what kind of damage can occur when you leave the roof open over a long period of time.
Right. It felt to me, I'll say, as you were talking about the sta, the status of the building, was that the building was in very good shape, except for that one floor that had fallen through on the second floor. I don't know if that's accurate, if I'm saying that accurately.
I think it was 1,500 square feet, you said? Out of, yeah, it's about 1% of the whole building.
So the fourth floor is in pretty good shape, then? Interesting.
Yeah. It's in better shape now that we have a new roof.
If I could just clarify.
Right, because I thought there was a thing in the. Right, because I thought there was a thing in the paper about what terrible shape it was all in.
Well, in general, there's been a lot of water damage, as you could see from the photographs. But that room that caved in, we wanted to give you an inkling of the good and the bad in the building. That is one room, I believe, from memory, it's on the third floor. It came crashing down from the water, but apparently there was a drain outside that seems to have contributed to that room getting more damage.
Right, okay. All right, because I know, as I said, reading about what terrible shape the building was in, I'm surprised that you're saying it's actually in very good shape, except for this 1%.
A lot of the work that will need to be done is, I'm going to call it cosmetic, if you will. But there'll be, you know, probably abatement and so forth that, like any construction job, has to be done. But in general, the building is sound.
Okay.
And again, the structural dictates limitation as to what to go into.
Sure, sure. And then a use question? On the, I think, on the side where the schools or whatever might be, could someone speak a little bit more about that? I wasn't clear whether that was going to be an actual preschool, or was you thinking that that was going to be leased out to someone else? Like, we're not going to run as a village an emergency backup daycare center, for example, are we?
Right now, that's all open. I don't think we are, but we may. I called it an early learning center to accommodate the obvious need, and that's, it's purposely gray, because it has to be defined.
But would it have to be run by the village, right? It couldn't be run by a private organization, for example?
It can't be run by private, no.
Right. And my final question is, I could be wrong about this. I thought I had heard a while ago that because of the designation as a historic building, that we could not put one of our public schools in there. Is that correct? That's a state...
I don't know.
I thought I had heard that was a state designation.
Let me clarify one point. Before we get to that one, I just want to go back to your nursery question. You have to remember that on this site, for many years, the cathedral ran a nursery school in those three cottages.
Right, so...
So that tells you...
So we're going back to that?
No, no, no. Remember what the premise was for tonight's meeting. This is an open opportunity. Some people may want it, some people don't want it. But I'm just suggesting to you that there is a legal basis for saying that, for those years, a nursery school run by something other than the village of Garden City was permitted and encouraged on this site. That's all. Whether that applies going forward is something we'll take a look at, but it is historically true to say that for multiple years, the cathedral nursery school operated on the St. Paul's campus. So to say whether or not it's daycare, non-daycare, private, none, these are things that we will have to evaluate, and we're open to that discussion. We don't have a preconceived notion on that. But it would be false to leave here saying that you've made a decision that private use is not possible on daycare here, which is what you said, as I heard it.
I thought private use of any, I thought private use of any type was not allowed because of the parkland designation.
That's a different question. I'm just saying, historically, on the nursery school issue, there was a historic nursery school.
So is private use of this space allowed, under the parkland designation?
The question isn't private use. The question is, can you do it without authority from Albany?
Okay.
Okay? And so, as I said earlier, there was a list of things that couldn't be done. Those are things that can't be done without getting home rule legislation authorizing that in Albany. What we've tried to focus on so far is things that we can do without having to go to Albany. And so, education is one of those areas, as you recall, I said, how will the program be designed? How will it be implemented? How will it be conducted? And so, the thought that you're going to conduct it with a private enterprise, that's going to probably send you to Albany. So what we've tried to focus on is, what can we do within this community without going to Albany? Unfortunately, there are no bright lines as to what is parkland use and what isn't parkland use. And the law is that if it has been designated parkland, which happened in 2005, whatever you use it for going forward, has to be consistent with what is not defined, but is described as parkland use. And that's what we're going to try to get to the bottom of when we have projects or proposals here that we decide have merit, and that we want to investigate further, that they can be afforded, et cetera. Can we do this on our own without going to Albany?
Because you just heard, there is some suggestion that maybe emergency childcare or something along those lines would be helpful. That's one opinion. You clearly have suggested a different opinion so far. That's part of the tension of this discussion, and that we'll take into consideration and discuss all summer, and come back to you with our conclusions on that.
And just for my own education, the thought I had heard that you couldn't put a public school in this building because, is that accurate, or is that not true?
No, there, once it's a parkland, there are a number of things you can't do.
Right.
And a public school would be one of those.
School is one of them. Okay, all right. Thank you.
There are a lot of things that could have been, that may have been, I don't know, considered back before it was parkland, which is in 2005, that might have been doable then, and might even be, and might have been considered desirable today. But the parkland designation takes what is a broad spectrum that can be viewed as public and municipal use, and narrows that spectrum dramatically.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, I'm John Pettoni. I've been a resident for over 50 years, and for 30 of those years, we've talked about St. Paul's. On and on. One of the, I have three questions. One question is, many years ago, it was discussed the possibility of having it as a village hall. And I have not heard anything along that same line, but it was put aside many years ago, and I'm not sure why, and I haven't heard anything. So what is the possibility of making this structure a village hall?
I always enjoy questions from John Pettoni. The issue on village hall, there are two hurdles in parkland. One says public purpose, and that's generally been viewed to be recreational things that you would do in a park, and the other is municipal use. So at some time, there was a suggestion that village hall be moved here. If that's one of the suggestions that you are going to make, John, we will take that under consideration and evaluate it and run it down, see if that's something that the village would like to do, and if it's legally permitted.
Now, John, as I understand it, what could have been done in 1997, in 2001, as, that would be viewed as appropriate municipal use or public use, in 2005, with the parkland designation, got eliminated without going to Albany. So things such as fire departments, police stations, things of that nature, things that would have been appropriate public use or municipal use before it was declared parkland are no longer on the table.
But it was declared, let me go right to the issue. It was declared parkland at the request of Mayor Miller and the Board of Trustees, and so the point is, so many of the things that you're talking about as a committee are limited by a parkland designation.
Absolutely.
So why can't the trustees, including the mayor and the trustees, go back and make an, let me finish, make an application to the legislature to designate this building as non-parkland? It seems very simple.
I think that what you're saying is, could we go to Albany and have legislation passed, home rule legislation, that would allow us to use it for what would be viewed as non-parkland uses?
Yeah.
I don't think that you can go to Albany and get a bill that would say, no longer parkland. What it would be, would be a bill that would carve out this from the parkland and allow you to use it in some different fashion than would be appropriate under parkland designation. But right now, as I said, Frank's committee, the mayor and everyone, we're trying to develop programs, and I'm just trying to keep the guardrails up. They're trying to develop programs that can be done independent of having to go to Albany.
Okay. One last point. I'm not sure how many people read Richard Bankowski's letter to the editor last weekend, which I thought was very, very appropriate. Once we figure out what the cost of the different things we're talking about, that before we even do that, to cover, figure out how it's going to be paid for, he suggested people foundations, money, because he doesn't think it's fair that the village residents should pay for a building which has limited use. I mean, even you had the skylight with flowers and everything else. But the point is, this is something which I think that you should consider. Just coming up with a price somewhere, and then designate a subcommittee to figure out how it's going to be paid for. Not, nothing, just whether it's donations, whether it's federal money, if the price is a million five, a million two, 500 million, whatever the price is. Let the village consider that, and as Mr. Bankowski had mentioned, it's the way we should go. I just make that point, ask you to consider it. Thank you.
Just before you sit down, there is a subcommittee on finance, and as I think both Frank and the mayor have explained, the burden that would be placed on the taxpayer, the residents of Garden City, is, we're acutely aware of that, and we're paying attention to it. So, and there is a committee. So it's not that that's going to be an afterthought.
We agree.
Okay.
Let me introduce Ryan Mulrooney, Chair of the Finance Subcommittee.
Good evening, everyone. I'll just start out, we do have a Finance Committee, Finance and Budget Committee, and we've already met several times, probably over a half dozen times. And before I start, I've been a resident for better part of 40 years. I've been following this since I was in high school, in Garden City High School. I get the apprehension of the people saying, you know, oh my God, they're going to knock it down. And I get the apprehension of the people saying, oh my God, I'm going to get taxed out of town. I get it. When I was named the head of the Subcommittee for Finance, I've done my best to root myself from those two sides. And all I really want to do is, once we have a final program for reuse, and once we have a final program in scope of a demolition, is get the finances for each, the cost of each, the cost of what it will cost to refurbish, demolish, the operating maintenance cost of each proposal, go through them, verify them, be transparent with them, and not only will we have a list of, this is what it costs to do, this is what it costs to maintain and operate, A and B, and here's what you get, but what I really want to do is make it comprehensible to the average resident. What does it cost me per year? What does it cost me per year to demolish it, and what do I get? What does it cost me a year to refurbish it, and what do I get? And then you make that decision. We're not going to be giving a recommendation. You're giving us the recommendation when you vote. So that's how I see our role. And our meetings, well, once we get the final proposals, we'll have a town hall that focuses on finance, and we'll be taking questions on finance. Our job is to make sure, the best of our ability, that the numbers that we get are accurate, and we have to determine the best way to finance them. The question is, grants, things like that, that's going to depend on what's there, you know? Grants will be given depending on what the purposes are. So that's something to keep in consideration, you know, when you give your feedback.
Yes, sir.
Hi, John Garcia, lifelong Garden City resident, actually, second generation. Thank you all for an excellent presentation, very informative. My question, Mr. Mayor, is for you. Looking at your committee on St. Paul's, just wondering about the makeup of the committee, and how many people are pro-demolition versus how many people are pro-reuse?
I'm sorry, I didn't take a poll of my members. When we first started this committee, as I said before, they came in with no preconceived notions. If they had an idea of demolition versus adaptive reuse, they kept it to themselves. My goal is to make sure we get facts. We get the facts to the residents, and the residents can make a decision then. So again, I don't know who's for or against. You know, I'm an architect, I do preservation work. Doesn't mean I'm for preserving the building or demolishing the building. I want to see what it's going to cost us and what the program is.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
How you doing? Steve Alardi. I've lived in the village for 30 years. A couple of comments and then a question. I'm not sure exactly the dates, but maybe five years ago, the village started a stabilization project with the building, in the thought of eventually doing something, right? Whether it was taking it down or not, I understand you have to abate it and make it safe for that. They took the IV off, they boarded up windows, they started patching the roof. And then, over the past couple of years, I've been led to believe, based on pictures that have been put on social media and through the village, that the building was basically ready to collapse onto itself. And I'm very surprised tonight to hear how solid it appears to be. That's my comment. And the question is, if the building is reused the way it was explained tonight with all three wings and all four floors, and the fourth floor only being accessible through each wing, does the entire building need to be ADA compliant?
Of course.
And do all three wings need their own elevator?
Yes, the building would have to be ADA compliant, have to have elevators, ramps, et cetera.
Okay.
Any kind of alteration, you would have to meet the current code requirements.
Because there was no mention of elevators or any of that type.
Well, we're not mentioning that, it's too premature.
I just was raising that question.
We don't have a design layout yet.
But if you utilize the three wings, that would have to be all the way...
Correct.
Completely ADA on all three wings.
Well, we have to have fire stairs as well, right? So there's a bunch of things we have to do in terms of vertical transportation, fire safety. These things will be addressed at a later stage when we have more details.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Dominic Valenti. At a presentation a couple of years ago, I believe it was stated that the vines and whatnot were getting into the mortar and the outside walls of the building, and that would eventually weaken it seriously. Now, we're being told that is not the case. Which one?
It'd have to be one very strong vine to get through two feet of brick.
Okay. I would think so. Okay.
It's really as simple as that. I mean, I know there's a lot of stuff out there.
So we were misinformed a couple of years ago.
There's a lot of stuff out there as far as the structure's concerned, and that was the first day I went into the building. I haven't been back in since, but those are my observations, straight and simple. I mean, it's really a massive structure internally.
Good.
It's just the way they built it. That's why it's still there 150 years later.
Yeah, you made that clear. Okay. Also, is there asbestos in the building?
There's no predominant source of asbestos. The time it was built, they didn't have it. You know, back in the late 1800s, they weren't using asbestos. It came later on in the century. There is nothing in that building that has asbestos that we're aware of. It's been tested. You may find some in the boiler room. That's about it.
Right. Great. Thank you very much.
There's, we were unable to find any asbestos. Again, they'll do an abatement to ensure that, but very importantly, there's lead paint. So that is toxic, so that's got to get removed.
And a lot of it, I would think.
I would imagine so. But again, when...
Lead paint.
Lead paint.
Lead paint.
And no asbestos.
We were unable to find asbestos. However, bear in mind, whenever there's a construction project, by law, there has to be abatement. And if they've added asbestos to some pipe that was not visible at the time of our inspection, you know, they'll have to remove it. So we were unable to see any, and we did see the lead paint, though.
Great. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Heather Nielsen. First of all, thank you so much for such an informative presentation. I think prior to this, I was leaning towards wanting to at least save the outside, but it was really nice to see some of the parts of the inside that might be worth saving, even if it's a historical demolition situation. Just a few points. One, someone mentioned the universal pre-K, and even if that's not a decision that we choose, it just might be mandated at some point. So I just hope we would be considering that. Like, if in the future, we have to have universal pre-K, where would it go? So I just think that might be something to be considering, that it might not be a choice for the village. In terms of the financials, I think a lot of times, we're not talking about what happens after demolition. So a lot of people think that, okay, we demolish it, and then there's nothing there, it's it's a field, it's cheap, we don't have to pay for that. But there's a lot of opportunity costs there. We could be putting something else in that spot. And we're losing a lot of revenue by not having anything else there that can be rented out. So, maybe we have a soccer field that can be rented out, but you could put, I'm guessing, you could put another building there that meets the parkland designation and then make money off of that. So, I feel like that is something to consider as well, that at some point, we might just put another building there. And so, do we want to have this building, which is beautiful, or another building that may not be as nice, but is less expensive? I don't know, just things to think about, because I feel like it's not brought up a lot in these discussions. And just, and I saw event space and catering mentioned in there. I've always just personally thought that it would be a really beautiful site to have big events if it's possible to have an open space somewhere. I know that the structure of the building prohibits it in some areas. I just would think maybe to think about which parts of the building would look best. I think the west side might be a little bit better than the rec department, just because you do get some really beautiful sunsets and probably some clear views of Manhattan if you are on the top floors at some point. And then, I just really hope that whatever vote comes to the village at some point, that we are not having such an all or none, black or white, like, decision on this. I mean, as you guys said, there's so many different options for demolition, there's so many different options for keeping it, and I just really hope it doesn't come down to get rid of it or keep it, because there's so much in between. There are so many different ways to do those two things. And I just really hope that we don't have to make an all or nothing decision. I think a lot of residents are in the middle somewhere, and hopefully, we can find a place that is not so extreme.
Right. Thank you for your questions. I want to make one point about one of your questions, about not being so black and white in terms of adaptive reuse or demolition. There might be different phases of adaptive reuse, there might be different phases of the demolition, right, that you can vote on. I'm not so sure we're going to get to that point, because, for example, let's say if you decide to phase the building, right? If you want to save, let's say, a portion of the building, right? That's a different way of proposing it. So, we want to make sure that we cover all those bases. I'm not sure we're going to have adaptive reuse A, B, and C, and demolition A, B, and C, right? I'm not sure we're going to get to that point. We'll do the best we can based on the input we get from the residents. If the residents want that, we can certainly accommodate that. And that might be a very clever way of doing it. Sir?
Hi, my name is Henry Beihoff. I'm a 30-year resident of Garden City. Unfortunately, this is not our first rodeo with this going round and round.
True.
My questions are, the proposal on the screen as a starting point, okay? This is where we're starting. Do you have an estimate on the cost of this proposal?
No.
No? Okay. Do you have an estimate for a demolition?
No, not yet.
So, you don't know what it's going to cost to demolish it?
No, we don't know. We haven't done that analysis yet.
Okay.
And there's different types of demolitions, as I said before.
And my other question is, if and when it does come to a vote, okay? Who exactly is allowed to vote on this? Is it the homeowner on the deed, people over 18 years old?
I think all registered voters in the village will be allowed to vote.
Which I always found unusual, even the school budget vote, because I'm a homeowner. If I have four college kids home that are voting, they're not paying for it. I'm paying for it.
I understand.
So, yeah.
No, I understand that you're...
You know, that's my concern, is that only deeded people should be voting on this, because that's the people that are paying for it.
I understand. I understand that your children, right, may not be paying the mortgage, right? But the children, if they're registered voters, have a right to vote.
They have a right to vote in an election, in my view. If it's coming out of my pocket...
The referendum.
I don't want my kids voting on issues that are costing me money. If I have four college kids home, oh, yeah, it sounds great. We're going to have a hockey rink and a swimming pool and, yeah. If it's out of my pocket, I want to be the one voting on it.
We'll take into consideration only the homeowners to vote and see if that's legal.
I don't know. That's what I'm asking you. I always found that unusual, even in the school budget.
I understand. That's a good legal question.
Yeah, check into it.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Susan Hyde, I'm a 45-year resident, and that was the first time I heard the hockey rink mentioned. That was...
I didn't hear that.
That gentleman mentioned the hockey rink, and I think that was one of those things that was floated in several proposals a while ago.
Right, yes.
Didn't go anywhere. What will the residents do in order to be able to see these plans? Or do you intend to share these plans with residents?
Yeah, this is going to be put on the St. Paul's Committee website, so you'll have access to it.
So, residents will have to know that this information is on the website. How do you propose notifying everybody?
We have a communication committee. They're putting this all together. This will be put out shortly.
We're going to have a dedicated village website for this committee. It's in formation, development. As soon as it is up, ready to go, it's going to have everything that we have, or, if you will, our archives. We will notify you based on the email addresses you gave us, based on publications, via social media. We will also have social media pages for this working group, and we'll put it in the Garden City News. So, you should have multiple opportunities to get, to find the link. You will be able to go to the village website and cross-link to the mayor's committee on St. Paul's website. When it is up, it is not up tonight, please don't go home and try to find it.
No, but my point was, will there be a mailing, a paper mailing to homes for people that are just not conversant with the internet or get the newspaper?
I don't know if we'll have a mailing. I think we'll try to figure out how we can expressly get it there. We're going to post it in the senior center, we're going to post it on kiosks. I hope we will put it wherever we can. I don't know that the village is in the business of doing a correspondence to 8,100 homes.
Bill, thank you. We do have some mailings going out, but we're not going to be mailing all this information out consistently, right? There'll be some mailings that go out strategically to inform you of, let's say, demolition analysis, adaptive reuse, the finance. So, there'll be strategic mailings to the public.
Okay. And then, another question. Could you just review, I don't know why I thought there was a timeline at which point you know that you will be making the proposal for a vote, that we will all participate in?
We're shooting for November.
So, all of this information will have to be disseminated, everybody be notified, and then there will be a vote in, did you say November?
November, correct.
November. So, that through the summer, there'll be additional meetings going on?
We're having meetings all the way to the end. People are meeting every month until we get to this point.
And our ability to contact the committees?
Will be on the website.
Will be on the website.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And you send us questions, we'll respond to the questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Sorry. Peter Manley, 113 Ninth Street. Let me start by thanking all the committee members for their time. I know it's a thankless job. I have three things. The first thing is, we've listened to a presentation for about 55 minutes tonight. We've seen several advertisements in the Garden City News. The thrust of all of those presentations has been adaptive reuse.
Correct.
When are we going to get details about demolition? That's thing one. Thing two, I want to build on what she just said. It is June 21st. You are aiming for a referendum in November.
Correct.
All right, Brian, you said that you're going to need details. How in the world are you going to vet an adaptive reuse proposal between now and then and get meaningful information to people to make a decision at least a month in advance of a November referendum? That's thing two. Thing three, demolition. Several times tonight, I've heard people up there say, "There are several options for demolition." There seems to be some thrust towards an historical demolition. Based on everything I've read, that's not required. When you make your presentation on a demolition, whenever that is, and I hope you gave it the same attention in the newspaper that you have adaptive reuse, what options are you going to present and how are you going to vet those?
Well, again, we have an aggressive schedule. You're absolutely right. The goal is to get to a referendum by November. The committee members are working constantly to get this done, right? So, I think we'll be able to do it. That's my, that's the goal. Hopefully, if it's not in November, maybe early December at the latest, but I think November is our target date. Regarding adaptive reuse, that's what we focused on first, because it's so involved, right? It takes a lot of more information to do the adaptive reuse analysis than it is to do a demolition analysis. Demolition analysis will go a lot quicker. So, that's why we're phasing it this way. So, as much as you think we're forcing that issue, we're not really forcing that issue. We're spending time on that, because it takes more time for us to develop that.
I've heard no information on that tonight. I look forward to hearing about the demolition options. You do a house renovation, you put an extension on, you do a kitchen renovation. How long does it take to go and get your permits and present and everything else?
No, I understand.
Yeah, okay. You think you're going to be ready in three, four months?
We're going to try.
With a plan for this?
We're going to try.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Stephen Supra, I'm on 110 Sixth Street. I just have a process question. And why isn't it that the village was thinking first, what is it that we need in the village? And then, once you come up with a program, say, "Will this building be useful for it?" That seems like a better way to approach whether to demolish or adaptive reuse.
Well, you want to answer that, Frank? I just didn't understand the question.
That may be a distinction without a meeting. The fact is, we're asking the village residents how they would like, what services they would like, and if it fits in this building or not. If it doesn't, it doesn't. What we've heard over the years is that there are a lot of services they would like, but there are no places for it. So, that's why we're asking. If you would like to come and come in with another process question, we'd be happy to entertain you at our committee meetings, and I'd be happy to tell you when they are.
Okay, while that is a little dismissive, the distinction is, if, as you said earlier, you can't fit a basketball court in here, and if the village decides we need more basketball courts, then that essentially throws everything out on the table, rather than trying to figure out what can we use, what program can we fill in this building to make it work. So, that is the distinction. My other process concern is that every three to five years, we have another one of these meetings.
Yeah.
And every three to five years, enough board members change and we sort of start all over again? And what are we doing to ensure there's some sort of continuity with the idea, rather than kick the can for another 30 years?
That's a great question, and it's part of the legal subcommittee, but I can tell you, it's something that we have had extensive discussions about, because if we've learned anything over these 30 years, not unique to Garden City, because I do this around the country for 45 years, that places where you have an election every two years are not really great organizations to entertain a long-term capital project. So, you're absolutely right on that, and we'd be happy to have you come in and talk about that at length at your convenience.
No, but, I mean, has there been any discussion about how to ensure that there is this continuity?
We're in the process of doing that, and over the summer, I'm sure the legal committee will be addressing it. And the mayor says that one way to assure continuity is to vote all the trustees back in again. I'll leave that to you.
That is one way.
But we'd be happy to have you at our meetings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Hi, Kathleen Sweeney. Thanks again to the committee, everybody who's served and done research, and to the Garden City News for printing things, and for people just trying to keep everybody informed accurately. Very much appreciate that. I have a kind of a, I have a legal question. My question is, can the state undo parkland designation at their own will?
Tony, as that question, I suggested that if there are things that people wish to do that aren't consistent or aren't compliant with parkland designation, then you go to Albany and you get a home rule bill that says, "Yes, you can do that."
Right.
And they put conditions on it. And it depends on what you want to do and how you want to do it.
Right.
And so, it's kind of hard right now.
I get that part of it. My concern is, if the, my real concern is, if the building were to be demolished and then we're left with what looks to me like parkland, right? Can the state all of a sudden decide? No, we like that. Can they undo parkland to do something else with it? So, my concern is, how much control do we lose?
It's Garden City's property. Garden City designated parkland. As long as it stays within the confines of the definition of parkland, the state can interfere. The interference, if there is to be any interference, is when you go to Albany to ask them to do something upon which they may place conditions that you aren't happy with.
Right. No, that I don't want to do. So, that's my real question was, how much can the state control it?
As far as I'm aware, we just, you know, as long as we're doing things within the confines of parkland...
Right.
Albany has nothing to say to us.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Diane Kendrick. I have something to say as far as, once this building is built the way you are saying, isn't it going to be a tremendous expense to the taxpayers to maintain it, plus also to have people working there? You're going to create a lot of jobs if you have a restaurant or whatever else it is that you're saying. I think it's going to not end the expense of preserving the building, it's just going to be ongoing and growing. Plus, I would like to make one comment as far as, there was a presentation in the newspaper from Mr. Cordes on a beautiful layout for a parkland, and I thought it was to be commended. That's it.
Thank you.
Hi, CB Chulo, Hilton Avenue. All of the, been a resident for nine years. All this looks very impressive. Appreciate the committee doing all this work. It looks very different from what we've seen, at least the time I've been here, and probably over the last 30 years. The building sounds to be much more structurally sound than what we've previously heard. Has there been any reconciliation between what was previously found and what we're now saying tonight, between whatever surveys were done and what we've now heard about tonight being really strong, really solid brick walls? And then, secondly, this plan, the proposed plan, looks very different from what we've seen in the past, with partial preservation with hockey rinks and basketball courts and all that. Is there a specific reason or thought process the committee has had as to why this looks completely different?
Well, let me explain. Some of the prior iterations of the designs that we saw in the years past increased the size of the area of the building, right? Adding a hockey rink, add square footage, you know, and adding square footage increases costs automatically, right? You're building at X amount of dollars per square foot. So, our goal is to try to work within the limits of the building as much as possible. And as I said before, even maybe less than the limits of the building, if it can be phased, or maybe areas not worked on at all. That's one possible way of trying to do an adaptive reuse of the building. But again, we're not seeking to increase the square footage of the building.
Okay. And any reconciliation between previous survey work being done on the validity of keeping the building versus what we're hearing now about it really being strong and structurally fantastic?
Well, the reports in the past didn't say the building was all coming down. I mean, I don't understand why people keep thinking that just because the building is old, it had vines on it, some of the windows are broken, that the building was falling down. As an architect, when we look at buildings like this, especially buildings that we think may collapse, we're looking for displacement, displacement of the facade, right? So, if you're off the vertical by any degree, then we know something's happening to the building structurally. When you walk around this building, you look at the elevations, they're all plum, they're all fine. I concur with the structural engineer. I don't think there's anything to worry about here.
Fine, understood. I'm not challenging anybody's...
No, but I'm going back in the other reports from other engineers.
Were there previous reports?
Yeah.
And are their current reports, do they match? Do they match?
Well, they don't match 100%. You know, every, every engineer or every architect's looking at something a little bit differently. They're very consistent, though, in my opinion.
Okay.
They're similar.
Thanks.
But not exact.
Good evening. My name is Batia Zahra, and I'm actually not a resident of Garden City. I'm here this evening because I was volunteering for the board of elections. We're holding early voting this week. And one of the reasons I asked to be allowed to work in this community is because the building is so beautiful. I actually thought that they were going to put us inside St. Paul's until I saw the pictures, I realized that that's not an option. So my question is actually a legal one. It's a bifurcated legal question. The first is, I noticed that there was a mention earlier that you could have greenhouse space, for example, that's on a non-commercial basis. And I'm curious if that means, non-commercial means not-for-profit. In other words, are you allowed to have retail or other kinds of, of revenue-bearing functions that go plowed back into the community? And my second question is, is are you allowed to have people who are not residents of Garden City either contribute to an endowment fund on a one-time basis or make other contributions that would not give them rights in order to maintain the building if people were interested in contributing from outside of your voting block?
Peter, you want to answer that? She has, she has legal questions.
Yeah, I, I understand. I think I heard the first one. The first one, well, I heard of both, but I think I understood the first one better than the second one. The first one was, if you have a non-for-profit involved in operations, whatever, is that a approved method of operation? Is that, was that your first question?
Yeah, basically, the, the, the term said non, non-commercial use, and my question is, is the, is the definition, so for example, in libraries, you can have revenue generation, but that's, that gets plowed back into the maintenance of the, of the event.
I understand, I understand that. Look, commercial use is, is going to draw you, drive you to Albany.
Right.
Nonprofit, and that's why I said early on, it's going to be dependent upon how you design the project or the program and how you implement it and conduct it. And so to say, I, it's very difficult to give you just a bright line answer that says, nonprofit, yes. You just can't do it that way. You have to, there has to be a more granular.
It's more nuanced.
Analysis of.
Yeah.
And the second one was use by outsiders, was that it?
No, contribution for, for example, if you wanted to build an endowment fund.
Oh, I haven't really focused on that. I mean, there are ways to have a foundation, for example, that would raise money that then would be used for the operation or the capital expenditure, whatever it is. Correct. That's a possibility, yes. But it depends, again, how you design it.
Right.
Is it, is it a legitimate charitable goal or, or, you know, designation? So.
Kickstarter campaign.
A lot of this is still in the most, Frank may not agree, but it's still in a very fundamental, you know, circumstance. And as we go through this, we're trying to develop programs that, one, meet the, the community's desire, if, if there is an activity that meets their desire. And then how do we fashion that? As I say, our, our preference would be not have to go to Albany, and, and how do we do it without putting a, a burden on the taxpayer?
So contrary, I don't disagree with Peter. Historically, we're going to look at a number of different sources of money, right? First remember, a rule is, what's affordable? Okay? If it's not affordable, we don't want to be seen as driving any group out of this village, whether they're very young or they're very old, okay? Number two, so where do you get those funds? We are going to look at grant opportunities, right? And we're going to look at philanthropic opportunities. Several years ago, the Committee to Save St. Paul's, of which I was a founding member, did a philanthropic drive and was able to secure a significant amount of cash. We would certainly consider doing that again for this opportunity, okay? I hope that answers your question.
It does, thank you.
And if you'd like to help, you're welcome.
Good evening.
Mr. Vassalotti, how are you?
Robert Vassalotti, 32 Brixton. Thank you, committee, for doing such a great job in presenting this tonight, from your posters to the communications here that list lots of ideas that came before from the residents, two pages of ideas of what can be done with this building in the past. And I know it's a lot of hard work. Myself, I was a founding member with Frank of the Committee to Save St. Paul's many years ago, and we worked long and hard to save this building. That's why we're here today to talk about it. Because only 1,120 people voted to demolish this building and pay for it, which was over almost $4 million in bonds to pay for it. So only 1,120 people, you know, said, let's knock it down. 3,290 are the reason why we're here tonight talking about this, okay? And that was in 2011, in the spring of 2011. I also want to remind people that structurally, there was a, there was an engineering firm called Sullivan and Nichols, and that report exists, and no one's mentioned it tonight. I don't remember the year that that happened. It was in the early, let's say, 2005, maybe. Sullivan and Nichols said, this building is built to last, it's strong, it's sound, everything you guys said tonight. This is not made up. There was an engineering firm that looked at it deeply and, and, you know, thorough investigation. And also Thomas Thornton, Thomas said he also thought it was very sound, too. This is the third group of people saying that this building is structurally sound. At any rate, I also want to remind everyone that 1869 is a historic date, right? One of the most unique towns ever founded in all of the United States, okay? We have something special to be proud of here. Okay, this is a unique place, and it is historic. This building is historic, okay? This fieldhouse even right here is pretty historic, okay? So all I'm saying is, you're working on a good plan. I think that the village needs to come to their senses and make some decisions, and the residents need to be wise about the future, you know? That we're entrusted to preserve a town that's got great historic significance architecturally from the get-go. I mean, every street was designed, every building, the entire plan, the railroad that we ride on was the Stewart Railroad. I would like to point out one thing on the parking, because I know that's a big issue with people down the road, that area that was the cottages. You know, if you, I, I just want to point out that if that's not enough space, look at Adelphi. They have the playing fields on one level, and just beneath it, you could drive into parking. It's not quite a double-tiered building.
Yeah.
It looks flat, and yet there's parking underneath and they have playing fields on top. There's no reason why the playing fields couldn't be just cars and cars underneath, and you get double the parking. It's a really good design at Adelphi. Need to look at it. The other thing they did on South Avenue is they buffered the parking. You hardly know there's cars there. Lots of trees, lots of vegetation. Something else to consider down the road for parking. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vassalotti. Thank you.
My name is George Salem. I'm seated because I have a bad back.
Okay.
I want to know who will be making the estimates of the relative cost to renovate St. Paul's or to demolish it? It's been suggested that the members of the subcommittee should do this important job. And after all, they are professional experts in architecture, engineering, contracting, and finance, and the law. I submit that none of these people should have the crucial responsibility for the vital task of making these estimates. Why do I say this? First, they're volunteers and insiders who could not be considered impartial. Secondly, many of them have stated that their employers would forbid them from attending, from attaching their names to estimates because of a potential liability for a bad estimate. So who should do the estimating? I think we need independent, objective experts to do this. Perhaps two or three estimates should come forth, just like competitive bidding. This is the correct way to do it, Mr. Mayor. What do you think?
George, I'm, I anticipated this already, all right? We, we sent out an RFP through the village administrator to obtain professional cost estimators experienced in construction estimating, right? So we have an RFP going out to get those proposals, to evaluate those proposals, right? And I agree with you. I don't expect all the members of the committee, right, to have this kind of experience. However, I, I trust Ryan Mulrooney and his committee to analyze the budgets and come up with the financing. And we will get a, a professional cost estimate of the demolition costs and also of adaptive reuse. So that's my goal. Thank you. Mr. Torino, trustee Torino, sorry.
Bruce Torino, 102 Ninth Street. A historical perspective, I believe, is important for a number of reasons. I've heard a lot of the comments that others have had, but they too, while having observations from the outside, did not live it. Mr. Petoni, 1997 and 2001 are years that I know well. And the reason why Village Hall is not there is because it was considered and not possible. There are other individuals in this room who said, don't put Village Hall there because the sirens from the fire department would annoy me. They also didn't want to have a walking track around the outside. So for every consideration that has been raised, they have been raised before. There has been periods of time where the Board of Trustees at that time wanted to put assisted living. But those plans did not go forward because of objections from the village. Quite candidly, this committee has done the best job I have seen on this project in the last 25 years. And yes, it is about time that we put this to bed, but there has to be the consideration of, if we don't keep the village, the, the building, what are we going to do with all the programs that would put, be put here, and where would they go? My father said to me a long time ago, they don't make land anymore. We don't have it. If you ask the village clerk, if you ask the recreation department, where can we have a meeting? The answer is, we don't have the space. So as much as you want to take down a building, for those individuals who think that it is nice to go take it down and make it a big open space, my question to you is, where are you going to put the children? Where are you going to put the programs? Where are you going to put the senior citizens who say, oh, by the way, I want someplace to go to? Where are you going to put the teenagers who say, where do you want? Well, for those people who think that green space is great, why don't you just plow out and fill the community pool? And you'd have more green space. That's no problem. So the consideration for the village here is not the past, but the future. We are only custodians for a short period of time, and we absolutely have to consider not only the cost, but the deficit that will result if our children don't have the space to do what they need.
Thank you, Bruce. Thank you.
If we demolish this building and we have green space, we can always build a new, appropriately-sized and appropriately-costed building to fill the needs that you, sir, suggested. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any other comments from the audience, please? Oh, sorry. Sorry.
My name is Cynthia Tigliano. Although I'm a new resident, hold on.
You can hold it.
Although I'm a new resident, I'm really not a stranger to Garden City. My husband has had a business here for almost 30 years. We participate in many, many things in the village. Sorry. Okay. Hi. I just wanted to let you know, you asked the question, why do people move to Garden City? I moved here because I appreciated the way this, this town preserves its history. I appreciated the way these people take care of their homes, and they preserve the architectural integrity of their homes, the way the streets are maintained, as though we are a village that, that, I don't know, sits on an island that is so built up that, but we have something so much different. And I regard St. Paul's, and I was hoping when I would move here, that St. Paul's would always be here, but I regard St. Paul's as that bedrock of the way things can last, things can look the way they had many, many years ago. We can make it better, we can make it, make it work for this growing community. I think for the past few years, we do have a growing community. We have more children, we have people who are living longer, who need places to gather, and I only see it as a beautiful historical benefit for our property tax, for, not our property taxes, our, our property values and, sorry, I'm just got a little nervous here. And I just completely support saving this.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Can you help me with that?
Any other comments? Sir, you want to speak? So you can just give it to the gentleman behind you, right here.
I don't have that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask about activity. If we have the kind of activity we're expecting to have there, and based on activity that we have now and the kind of traffic and so forth that we have, and we expect people who have very busy schedules to go up multiple floors, rush in with their kids and rush out and so forth, what is it going to look like there with all those people and all that activity?
I don't, I don't think people are going to be rushing in. Things will be scheduled, I hope. Hope they can come in on a certain schedule rather than just rushing into the building.
Well, that makes it a little bit more intense because everybody comes at a certain time and leaves.
Right. Well, they're not going to have all the activities all at one time. I don't imagine that would happen. I think they would be scheduled in some way.
That's, that's a big building with a long list of activities.
Right. Well, we're not, again, we want to make sure that the residents have a chance to look at all the activities, the uses that we're, we're proposing. We're not going to put all those uses in there, but we're going to have the uses that the residents want to, want to have employed in the building.
Well, we're talking about the potential of 650 cars.
Well, that's based on the zoning.
And that's not including the soccer field.
That's based on the use that we've done so far, right? And based on the zoning requirements for parking.
It's something to consider.
Yes, we will. Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you, thank you, everyone, for coming.